I'd like to call the regular council meeting, November 7th, 2013, to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Yanni?
Here.
Mr. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Stucker?
Here.
Mr. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Stephen Oller?
Mr. McKay?
Here. We have an absent member, I believe he's coming, but what is your pleasure? I move that they be excused. Motion seconded, that we excuse the absent member. All favors in public say aye.
Aye.
These voters. Motion carries. If you would set your cell phones to silent and please join us in the fight for allegiance.
Fight for allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the President's agenda tonight, all we have is the approval of minutes for the October 17th regular meeting, which are in your packets. What is your pleasure?
I move that they be accepted as presented.
Your motion, Mr. Yanni, seconded by Mr. Stucker. All favors signify the same aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Mr. Mayor.
I've missed a couple of meetings, it's good to be back. Very good to be back. Before I get started, I would like to tell Don how good it is to see him. Last time I saw him, he was in a hospital bed and scared me.
Me too.
But, Don, it's good to have you with us.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to some people after my recent accident and my hip replacement. First of all, I want to thank my wife Barb. Without Barb's love, I wouldn't even be able to be here tonight. So, and I want to thank everybody that came to the hospital and visited me, anybody who sent me a Get Well card, or anybody that prayed for me. And I wanted to thank the Wilmington Fire Department Life Squad for responding quickly and getting me to the emergency room. And I have a new thought about the Life Squad right in the back of one with a broken hip. It was a little bit rough getting there, but I made it. And I wanted to thank the Clinton Memorial Hospital for all their care and concern, the emergency room doctors and nurses, the fourth floor nurses, the ICU nurses, and the inpatient rehabilitation nurses on the second floor. It's really humbling when you're just completely helpless and people are willing to help you like they do. And I want to thank Dr. Agabagie, my surgeon, and Dr. Leaky, the hospitalist that took care of me in there. I just want to say that Clinton Memorial Hospital is a real asset to our community, and I appreciate them. So, thank you. It sure is good to have you back.
I'm going to step forward for a moment for proclamation, and all of you folks that are here for the pancreatic cancer awareness, I certainly ask you to come forward. You'll see a lot of purple up here. In fact, a good friend of ours, Roger Conger, died of pancreatic cancer. Andy, how long ago was that? He was assistant fire chief.
It was April of '05.
'05, so it's been seven years. It's amazing. I was thinking about Roger when I was tying this purple tie this evening. And I know you all think of your loved ones that have died of pancreatic cancer, and the goal of the Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month isn't just so that people are aware, because it is such a deadly form of cancer, but it's also to raise interest, to raise awareness, and to raise funds. Because there is a cure for pancreatic cancer, we just haven't found it yet. And it takes money, it takes research to find those cures. So, that's why we keep doing this. And I expect to see you all up here until we find that cure. And you'll also notice purple lights in every one of the city building windows. That is for pancreatic cancer awareness. So, we actually did a proclamation earlier, but I want you to hear it as well. Whereas this year, an estimated 45,220 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 38,460 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest forms of cancer, when symptoms first present themselves, it is often too late for an optimistic prognosis. Seventy-three percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis. Seventy-three percent. Ninety-four percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. That's amazing. We have to do something about that. It is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States. Whereas there is no cure for pancreatic cancer, and there have been no significant improvements in survival rates in the last forty years. And whereas the good health and the well-being of the residents of Wilmington, Ohio, are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and development of effective treatment. Now therefore, I, Randy Riley, as mayor of the City of Wilmington, hereby designate the entire month of November to be Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city, and ask all citizens to put a purple light in their window, or wear a piece of purple clothing during this month, to honor and in honor and recognition of citizens we have lost to this devastating disease. In witness thereof, I have therefore sign my name. And I hope we don't have to do this a whole lot longer, but we'll do it as long as we can. And I thank you for what you've done. So...
You need to have her tell what Austin's is doing this month, too.
Yes, please.
Every Friday in Austin, the staff are wearing purple in honor of it.
I just took something down there, too.
So, Austin's the new restaurant downtown, they're involved. We want everybody to be involved, so thank you so very much.
No matter how little you give or what you do, we do make sales. We did one last weekend, we're doing this, you know, a month ago, it's kind of messy this week. And every little bit helps.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you'd introduce yourself, and just tell us very briefly, who it is that brought you here tonight, why you're here?
I'm here because of my husband. He passed away April of 2012, and he was diagnosed in August of 2011. And he had no symptoms whatsoever. He just got sick one day, started feeling cold, and he was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. And by the time we got it, it had metastasized. So, just often too late. This is my daughter, and this is her dad, and Grandpa, this is Katie, and this is just a friend of the auxiliary, Linda Moore. So, we do what we can.
Absolutely.
My name's Chelsea.
My name's Jeff Steins. My wife, Chelsea's mother, was diagnosed in the fall of 2009 with pancreatic cancer, and passed away in June of 2010.
And it is so quick. Roger, I was in the office talking to Roger at Station 2, and just a few days later, he had abdominal pain, went to the hospital. First symptoms, abdominal pain, went to the hospital. He was never discharged from the hospital, he died during that hospitalization. So, think about it, pray about it, and support it in any way that you can. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And here, this is your tie now. Yeah. He said, "Ooh, I don't have a purple tie." And I said, "Well, you will have before this is over." I can get another, but you wear this this month, and I'll get me another one, okay?
All right, thank you.
My pleasure. My pleasure. Don't ask me for the shirt off my back. That could get ugly. Real quick. I would, if it would help. I have a little bit more business to do this evening. Before we get into the presentation, I would like to note, last year, we had a presentation from the Health Department of the Healthy Ohio, Healthy Community, City of Wilmington Gold Award. And Pam Walker Bauer, the Health Commissioner, couldn't be with us this evening, but we received another one. This is two in a row that we've received. And this is really interesting. Let me read just a little bit from the release that she gave me also. "The Healthy Ohio, Healthy Community Award recognizes communities' outstanding achievements in developing and implementing health-related policies and providing healthy community environments. This award recognizes community efforts in enabling employees, residents, and visitors to make healthy choices, including participating in physical activities, eating good nutritious food, and avoiding tobacco." So, we have programs throughout the county that help make Wilmington and Clinton County a healthy community. We have last year's, in fact, we just posted it, we have last year's posted out in the hallway, and then we've got another one to put up. And if we get five in a row, then we become a platinum community, which rarely happens in Ohio, so it gives us something to shoot for. And I so much appreciate Pam and the Health Department for all of their good work in that. Would also note that we do have a photo contest going of pictures of trees, fall color trees. If anybody takes a picture, send it in by email to the City Hall, and we will have a judging. The contest ends the middle of this month, November the 15th. So, I encourage you to participate. Also, I wanted to point out, and remind everyone, Veterans Day this next week, on the 11th, there will be a program at the Veterans Memorial on Port House Square. I encourage everyone to be there. Just so that you know, Veterans programs are designed to end exactly at 11 o'clock. So, it's the 11th day, the 11th month, at the 11th hour, that's when it ends. So, we will be starting sometime between 10:00, 10:15 in that area, so don't be late. And again, this year, Billy Kong sent me a note saying that he would once more give a free dinner to any veteran who shows up. Just drop out at Number One China Buffet, and you're on Billy's tab that day. And I so much appreciate him doing that. I have a few other things, but before we get into that, I want to really thank, we have a guest with us, Brett Beatty has come in, and he is here specifically with Bob Tobobin, and Bob has championed this in the past, to talk about our deer population. And I know Joe Sedini has talked to us about it, and I think Joe's come to counsel, to talk about our deer population. A month ago, probably, I contacted Brett and asked him to come in and talk about what other communities have done. Our herd of deer is growing, it's not healthy for the deer, it's not good for the community. In fact, it was just in the front page of the paper last week where deer jumped through a window at Wilmington College into their library, and thank goodness, nobody was injured, but that could have had a really bad outcome. So, we just had a deer jump through a plate glass window, and then they finally hunted it out the door. But, if you would like to introduce yourself, and just whatever you have, we appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you start, I just wanted to mention that Councilman Stephen Oller has joined us at 7:44. Go right ahead. The floor serves.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I appreciate you inviting me here to talk to you and the members of your community about deer and deer management. As Mr. Mayor mentioned, my name is Brett Beatty, I'm the Wildlife Management Supervisor for District 5, that's 17 counties in southwestern Ohio. Part of what I do is oversee basically all wildlife, terrestrial wildlife operations that our agency handles in this part of the state. A little bit about deer, starting out, historically, there was a time when deer were considered exonerated from Ohio, which essentially means there were no more deer in Ohio. Then eventually, through efforts of state agencies and natural immigration from surrounding states, deer populations started to grow. We had our first regulated hunting season back in the 40s, had a statewide hunting season in the 60s, and now we've grown to where we have robust deer populations in all 88 counties across the state. The goal of the Division of Wildlife and how we manage deer is we want to have a number of deer for people to ensure their enjoyment, whether it's hunters, nature lovers, photographers. But at the same time, we don't want to have too many deer to cause a hardship on any individual, whether it's, excuse me, I'm fighting a little bit of cold here tonight, whether it's a hardship of the landscape, or through agriculture, or through some other loss of monies. And we manage deer on a statewide basis and on a county level, and we do that through hunting, through hunting regulations. The more liberal our bag limits, that's the amount of deer an individual hunter is allowed to harvest in a given season, the greater impact a hunter can have on that population, and the greater impact it can have overall to reducing, or stabilizing, or allowing the population to increase. The issue we have is when we use hunting as deer management tool, which is great for the vast majority of the states, but within city limits, there's, many cities have historically had restrictions on hunting. I think for obvious reasons, when these laws were first created, that it was most likely a safety concern. I think now with the advancements in hunting and different methods of hunting, particular bow hunting, that hunting can be utilized in relatively close confines to populated areas, still be safe, again, particularly with arbitrary equipment, and particularly when utilizing elevated platforms. For folks that aren't familiar, it's common for deer hunters to use what are called tree stands, to climb up into a tree and wait for a deer to come by for an opportunity to harvest that deer. So, it's beneficial for the hunter, because he's up in the air, and it's easier for him to sit and wait and ambush when the deer walks by. So, the obvious challenges in communities, you got the city as a whole, but you also have a bunch of individuals in that city, often with small tracts of land. You may have one neighbor who is perfectly satisfied with the amount of deer that are there, doesn't see any problems with them. The next neighbor has his hostas are eating down to the dirt, and is very upset about the deer. So, it's definitely a challenging issue, where you try to strike that balance of deer for folks to enjoy without causing others hardship. Kind of the same balance that we try to strike on a statewide basis, it's just more of a micro environment that as city leaders, you all deal with trying to strike a balance, just like you try to strike a balance with all the needs of the folks that live in the City of Wilmington. So, that's, I would like to take a moment and address some questions. If council members have questions, Mr. Mayor, if you have some questions, I'd like to address.
Certainly, and one of the reasons I asked Brett to be here was to have an exchange of ideas. We, as of now, do not allow hunting within the City of Wilmington, so if we were to want to allow hunting within the city, we would obviously have to change our ordinances, which we go through judiciary, go through council, there would be no chance of public input. But I saw this as step one, because in having talked with Bob several times in the past about it, and just as recently as this week, our deer population is many times what a healthy deer population would be in the area within the city. And what were the statistics, Bob?
Oh, we have well over 300 deer inside the city limits, with 95% fertility rates. They're increasing about 5% to 7% a year, and we can't go on further.
And the right relationship between deer per square mile is...
Is based upon a carrying capacity of land, which, wooded areas like Chester, Adams, Vernon, you know, they could probably support 20, 25 per square mile. That's a lot. I think 10 and 15 is more reasonable. But inside the city limits, because people are feeding them, and because of the greenbelt we tried to develop for the Park District, it's around 80 to 90 per square mile.
So, it's four or five times what it should be?
Oh, I had read in my statistics, 13 times.
13 times, okay.
That's one of the healthy populations.
And Bob mentions the carrying capacity, which is a term that's used frequently. And think of a carrying capacity as a bucket that you keep pouring water in. Carrying capacity is one, that bucket can't hold any more water, and it's flowing over. But in terms of deer and other wildlife, just because that particular animal has not flown over the top of the bucket, doesn't mean it's not causing ecological impacts as that population builds up. But what you'll start to see, and Bob may be able to mention, deer are heavy browsers. They can eat several pounds of browse, and browse generally consists of wood and other herbaceous materials. So, but as you can imagine, deer can only get up so high. So, in places with high deer populations, you'll see what's known as a browse line, where there's a line of vegetation from a given height up, and down below that, it's basically devoid of all vegetation. And that can have a negative impact on a lot of other flora and fauna in a given area. It can greatly impact rare and endangered, possibly, plants. I'm not sure what kind of plants you have in the environment.
Pennsylvania's issue is they can't even regenerate the forest, and they just have a canopy and nothing underneath. The deer eat all seedlings, and it's a big problem.
And it impacts other animals that live on the ground and depend on that low vegetation ground as they burge. And also, when they remove a given type of flora that's native to the area, you open up the area for invasive species. Invasive species are plants or animals, but in this case, I'm speaking of plants specifically that are not native to a given region of the world. In this part of the place, in this part of the world, we had issues with autumn olive and bush honey suckle, probably the two big ones. So, these invasive species come in, and they crowd out all the other good plants, if you will, native plants. So, it kind of builds, it's not just one issue, it's a web of issues that the deer kind of drives, I think, that an elevated deer population, an artificially elevated deer population can drive. Outside, in order to reduce a deer population, you have to remove more deer from that population than are introduced into it. So, basically, you have to have more deaths in a given year than you have births. So, that's pretty simple math there. The challenge is, how do you get to that? You think of natural mortality, but in this day and age, particularly in city limit confines, and Ohio in general, natural predators are pretty slim. It's down to about coyotes, and generally coyotes only affect deer when they're young, and when they're fawns. Still have an impact, but a moderate impact at best. Then you look at other potentials for deaths that was out there. Accidents, wild animals do have accidents, whether they're impaling a fence, they jump through a window, they get hit by a vehicle, something like that. And disease is an issue as well. Higher densities create the environment for having disease. And it's, can be things, brain abscess and things like that, that aren't necessarily stuff you're going to see in the woods, but there are animals that, as it comes to various sicknesses and stuff like that. In general, those, on a statewide, broad picture, those animals that expire from those types of causes equal about 15% of a total mortality in a given year. The whole rest of that mortality is hunters. So, hunters harvest, of all the deer that die in a given year in Ohio, hunters are causing those, are harvesting those deer, about 85% of all the deer that die are harvested by hunters. So, hunters have a huge impact on a statewide deer population level.
And the communities that have allowed deer hunting within city limits, and I know when I was in Ukraine last month, Indian Hill, the city manager, former city manager of Indian Hill, Mike Burns, was there. We had an opportunity to talk about what they're doing in Indian Hill, which is fairly well-populated, small area, but they were having a huge problem with deer. And they are now allowing limited deer hunting. You have to get a license, you have to prove your abilities with arrow, bow and arrow. And he said they've had wonderful success with limiting the size of the herd, limiting the damage that the herd does.
Indian Hill was out on the front lines, if you will. They started their deer hunting program, I can't remember what year, Bob, do you recall?
Mid-'90s.
Mid-'90s, so they were way out front. Now, they are kind of unique. If anybody's familiar with Indian Hill, it's a community in the suburbs of Cincinnati. Probably the average lot size is probably 5 to 10 acres. So, quite a bit different than a Wilmington, but still, it's a populated area that allows hunting. Other cities are also pursuing similar type of hunting. Each city has their own little spin on it, because each city really has different needs, depending on their people, who lives there, and what their ultimate goals are. The City of Oxford, where Miami University is located, they have deer hunting program. The City of Wyoming, which is also a suburb of Cincinnati, just started a deer hunting program. The Hamilton County Parks, which have changed their name to the Great Parks of Hamilton County, they've had an outstanding deer program in their parks for a number of years. Cincinnati Parks, excuse me, very active in their deer hunting, as well as Five Rivers Metro Parks in Dayton. Other cities around the state, New Albany, which is up in Columbus area, has a deer hunting program. So, there's lots of cities that have tackled this effort, this issue, and are pursuing options. And it's not just an Ohio issue that's being addressed, it's really statewide, or nationwide, where the urban environment is very well-suited for the whitetail deer, and the population has expanded.
I found it interesting in talking with Bob this past week, that our deer population throughout the State of Ohio is now greater than it's probably ever been. In fact, we have more deer in the State of Ohio now than we had when Tecumseh was alive. So, we have a huge deer population. And of course, when Tecumseh was here, there weren't very many people, and very, very few Buicks running around. So, the opportunity for people and deer to have applications, more or less, has significantly increased. This was, this issue was brought to us by Joe Sedini, some time ago, we were talking about it, and my friends Jamie and Ruth Hayes called just this past week, concerned this, they didn't even know that this was going to happen tonight, and I asked them to come to this meeting. And if you'd like to ask a question, or make a comment about your experiences, Peterson Place?
We've just noticed that the population is growing, and they're unafraid. They don't mind at all that we pull in our driveway, and they just stand there, doesn't make any difference, and they eat my roses, and they're eating the holling, and I just can't get, they don't pay any attention to me telling them to leave.
And that's rare, you all should know. For somebody not to listen to Jamie Hayes, that's a rare deer, too. I can't tell you how many times I've driven down to Mount Peterson Place, and you've had deer in the circle, which is a great place. If I was a deer, that's probably...
I want to know, why doesn't the State of Ohio reduce the deer population more? I mean, why do they set a limit, and we still have too many deer? Why don't they take more?
Well, if every deer hunter that killed their potential limit, then we would be able to reduce the population considerably. The issue is, the average deer hunter kills one or less deer, even if their bag limit is 1,000. The average deer hunter just takes one or less deer. Are there guys that tag out, is the term in the hunting realm? Yeah, sure, but the average guy, one or less. So, it's not so much that we're restricting them, it's just hunters, they're just don't quite have that drive to kill that many deer.
Fertility control hasn't helped any?
I'm sorry?
Fertility control, that hasn't worked out, has it?
Depending on the environment, and the surrounding ecosystem in particular, the, a gentleman that's done quite a bit of research on the matter is a gentleman by the name of Dr. Kirkpatrick. And he's a hunter, but he's also an advocate of fertility, and whitetail deer, and in other wild populations. And he describes the deer population that can be controlled by contraception as discreet, which means individual, separated from. What I don't believe you have here in Wilmington is a discreet deer population. While it is an urban, suburban issue, you're surrounded by lots of agriculture, lots of open range land. An example of a discreet population that had success reportedly with contraception is the deer population on a place called Fire Island. is the deer population on a place called Fire Island. It's an island on, on the east coast. Trying to recall, it's about twelve or thirteen miles long. At the widest, I think it was a mile, at the narrowest, about a half mile. So free ranging deer, but it's very isolated. There's another example of a, of a place in, I believe it was in Maryland. Basically, it was a wooded area, got built up around it to where essentially those deer were in a discreet population. So there are handful of examples where I believe it may be effective. And there may be something in the future that could possibly be more productive or a combination of tactics, maybe the use of contraception along with shooting and calling. Maybe it's a strategy in the future. Currently, in order to use contraception on deer or any wildlife in Ohio, you have to have permission from the chief of the Division of Wildlife and it has to be based in a scientific research project. It has to be a written letter with the project presented to the chief describing what the research is gonna be.
Does it need add darts or just feed?
The, what's used currently is, is not feed, it's just darts. In fact, the one product that has been approved by the FDA is a product called Gonokon and it, it's labeled that it has to be administered by hand with direct injection. So.
Lots of love.
So essentially what happens there is the deer is darted, is sedated, and then the contraception is, is administered, the deer is tagged. The deer may be sterilized for a year or two, but it needs to be continually with boosters. So the initial cost is quite high, but it can get reasonable over the years as you're not treating every deer every year. The issue is with a place like Wilmington, immigration from the outside. So you can only work in what you have within the city boundaries. So you can't run across the countryside darting deer and applying contraception. So you're limited in what you can work in, but you're not limited on what deer can do on your boundaries, basically, in and out, in and out of the world.
Listen, the biggest, the biggest issue I think we have in the county and we should focus on, in my opinion, is the agriculture. Again, as I had mentioned and I'll reiterate from last meeting, this is an agriculture, you know, related count, country or county and city. We make a lot of revenue. I think everybody here has revenue coming from pretty much involved with that, whatever you do. And as we talked, as you talked earlier about the browse lines and the lack of food and the overpopulation, these deer, when they get to that point for a good part of the year, are heading right to the ag fields. And I think, again, I think it's our duty to protect what probably our biggest industry in Wilmington right now. And they're gonna continue and, and they don't see the borders like we do. They, they go back, they get their agriculture and they use that as much as they can and then they go back into the city for protection there and it becomes quite, am I right in stating that? What is a normal deer's travel? You could probably answer that too.
It, it depends on the deer, whether it's male or female, how old the deer is and what available resources it has immediately around it. Deer on all wildlife and people too, you need three basic things, food, water and shelter. If all those things are readily available and pretty much in a compact area, a female deer, a doe, may only travel a half mile or a mile or so. A buck, a male deer, can travel several, three or four miles for a home range. Come this time of year, which is rut, which is the whitetail deer breeding season referred to as the rut, you never know where a buck is gonna go. He just gets traveling, pursuing a doe to breed and he can end up miles and miles from where he, his home range would typically be.
A half mile's a long way to say it. I mean, you can get a lot, you can get to a lot of farm crops in, in a half mile. Again, I'm pulling strictly on agricultural.
And again, that depends on the resources available. If there were fewer resources available as far as food, water and shelter, the animal would have to range farther to, to meet all their needs. And I think it would vary seasonally as well. Come late summer, when all crops are on, and there's plenty there for a deer to eat. He doesn't have to travel that far. But if you get all south and east of town here, there's a lot of big fields out there. So once those fields get harvested, there's not much place for a deer to go. You know, often, a deer's not gonna spend its entire winter sitting out in the middle of an open cornfield. It needs cover, it needs food, it needs water.
In cities that have, allow hunting dependency limits, is there a provision to process the meat and the hide in some way or are they just kill them and take them away somewhere?
Well, whereas hunting, conventional hunting, the hunter possesses that animal. So once the animal's harvested and tagged, it's, it's the hunter's animal to, to process and then put in his freezer. There are some cities that provide to encourage more harvest, as I mentioned, forests, most hunters are one or less deer, but to encourage more harvest, they'll provide for the processing of the deer to donate to a food bank. There's also a program called Hunters and Farmers Feeding the Hungry. It's a, it's a, oh, an organization that believes that there's a great resource out there to feed people that are hungry. Anybody that's ever been, worked with a soup kitchen, you know, proteins are hard to come by. So you work with folks at a soup kitchen, you come in with a hundred pound of ground meat, you see a bunch of smiles on folks' faces. So it's a, it's a good resource. The hunter is still donating his time in the cost of his tag, but then farmers and hunters feeding the hungry are, are providing the, the processing cost. And then they work with local organizations to make sure that meat is distributed locally.
Are some cities using professional collars or to do, to clean up the herds?
Sure, sure. Often referred to as sharpshooters. And of course, that's, there's a variety of methods there. You can hire outdoor professionals or outside professionals to come in and do that. These guys are, that's what they do, a hired gun, for lack of a better term. Some folks use their, their police force. So they have folks that are firearms trained and often have the equipment to go out and do the calling. That takes a little bit of work and cooperation with the Division of Wildlife. As you can imagine, shooting a deer with a rifle is often frowned on by us. It would be considered illegal in most cases, particularly at night when most of the sharpshooting happens. So there's a, a permit and some tags that can be issued that, that allow for that.
Can I ask one more question? What are the reasons people, I can think of a lot of reasons why you would want the deer gone? What is a reason other than people just have a, the only thing they don't like hunting that you don't do it? Is there some other reason that I'm, that I don't?
Well, I think that's very complex. I think that is based, you could ask a hundred people that are not in favor of hunting.
We're talking agricultural damage, we're talking about flower damage, we're talking about road. I mean, I bet there's a lot of facts of it. If you look the other side of the point, is there anything other, because I haven't seen one yet other than I just don't like hunting. There's not, we need to stay, you know, save the deer because they're providing oxygen to the atmosphere.
That would probably be a negative too, if we really don't like them.
Maybe some people just don't like killing things for nothing.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be the only reason.
Oh, yeah. They didn't hurt you.
Yeah, okay. But that's, that's the only reason. I just wonder if they're.
They are hurting, they are hurting agriculture. Their, what happened at the college last week, it certainly has caused an injury to the librarians. Anybody who hits a deer, I know quite a few people that have had significant accidents, serious accidents from deer strikes or from trying to avoid a deer, they run into a tree and die. So it, it, there are, there is a significant damage from a heavy deer population.
I think if we want to discuss this, you know, in more detail, which it kind of sounds like we do, we would need to move this, you know, into a committee, which is probably judiciary.
My, my, my next comment was, was that we would try to craft some legislation to take to judiciary and then of course, as we discuss it in judiciary and then move it to council, that would give us an opportunity for more discussion with the citizens, but that, that would be my point.
And I would recommend that it be a holistic approach, that it be, that include more than just allow people to go kill deer, that there be an educational component to it, that there be other options for folks. I, I don't know what kind of fencing laws that you have for folks in a, in a community. Maybe you can allow folks to use a variety of fencing or something like that. So I, I would look at all options and to provide folks in the city, in Wilmington, a variety of options to help address their needs.
You could give us a list of four or five cities that are similar in population?
I'd be willing to come and meet with the committee to talk about options.
And successful cities, you know, that are dealt with.
And of course, success is all relative. So what would be considered successful to one may not be considered successful to another. But I, I think it's an important issue that requires the attention of you mayor and the members of the council. It's not gonna go away and the deer population's not gonna decrease without some action.
We would never, we would never try to kill every deer.
And I don't think you could.
I don't think we could. But it's not to exterminate the deer, it's to get a healthy.
Perpetual, it's all about the balance.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you for that, because that's what we'd be looking for.
Yes, sir.
I'm not a, I don't know a lot about deer hunting laws. I've never been a hunter, not that I'm against hunting, it means nothing. But if I remember correctly, in the county areas, unincorporated areas, do farmers have a extra opportunity to cull deer off of their property other than hunting season? I mean, does a farmer, if he's having continuous damage, you know, that he can take deer?
If, if a farmer has current active damage caused by deer, then he could be eligible for a deer damage permit, similar to the permitting process I was talking about with the sharpshooting. Essentially, represented by the Division of Wildlife, will come out, meet with the landowner, verify the damage and it will issue a permit and tags at that time. Those are done outside of the conventional hunting season while the damage is active and actually occurring.
Is that a complicated thing? Is it a long, long process? I mean, or is it a simple phone call, you know, and three days later you have a permit?
Right, and we have a procedure for it that requires that, once we're contacted by a landowner, that we have five days to respond or at least make arrangements with the landowner, depending on his urgency, to meet. We show up with the paperwork. Generally, one of the things that hold up the process is the farmer is responsible for coming up with his own shooters, if he's not gonna be a shooter himself. And there's some paperwork required with that as far as names, driver's license, hunting license, and we do a quick background check to ensure that any shooters on a permit have not, don't have any recent wildlife violations, particularly deer violations. So we don't want to give a permit to a poacher to allow him to go out and, and shoot deer at night, so.
Bob, you've had a permit, have you, huh?
I've had depredation for this five times.
Oh, okay.
One thing that wasn't brought up tonight, but I'll be short, is the amount of injuries. So I've lost two of my students to deer on a motorcycle. They are responsible for killing more Americans every year than sharks, bears, mountain lions, coyotes and bees and lots of man- electric shock combined. And, you know, Clinton County, I have statistics down here, we average between a hundred and eighty and two hundred and ten deer strikes a year. And I'd say approximately twenty, twenty percent of them maybe would be within the city limits. And in America, in Ohio, it's, it's enormous. The average deer population is around twenty-six hundred to three thousand dollars and we all end up paying for that deer that doesn't carry collision insurance.
But, and, and I agree with you, Bob, in regards to the number of strikes in the county and so forth. Based on the last of the data that we had, and unless Dwayne is going to contradict me, you know, our deer strikes in the city are, are almost nonexistent. Partially because you're driving so much slower in the city, you know? I mean, I know we have no deaths due to deer in the city.
You already go rogue.
I'm, I'm not saying it's not a problem in the county. I agree with you and I'm agreeing that there needs to be something done with the deer population, but let's, let's be realistic in what we're talking about. People are not getting killed in the city of Wilmington by deer and deer accidents. In fact, you know, the last time we actually looked at this, it was less than one hand's worth of accidents in an entire year that were deer related inside the city. Now, what happened at the college is very unfortunate and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do something, but let's not, let's, let's not pull up the entire county into a situation that we're talking about with Wilmington. Because our other problem that we have is whatever we do here is not being done in our surrounding areas. We're not being supported in union township. There's a lot of landowners that won't, won't allow hunting on their land. And so the deer continue to move in, they continue to move out. I'm not saying we shouldn't do anything. I was adamantly opposed before and I'm willing to think about it, but let's not, let's not add statistics that aren't realistic to the city of Wilmington. And one of my, one of my concerns is truly the health of the herd. We, we have a herd of deer that is, is being so dense that there are several diseases and things that can happen to a herd when they get that type of population. And I, I think for the health of the herd, you need to call it a support, just like your analogy with the buck. At some, at some point, you need to help fix it.
And also, one of the greatest concerns is your, people aren't calling your office to complain about unhealthy deer. They're calling your office to complain about their hostas, their roses, their gardens.
And property damage, I'm sure, plenty of property damage.
That is probably, as you guys are basically here to serve the people of Wilmington and probably your biggest thing would be to address that issue. I would say more so than the, even the health of deer. Believe me, I love healthy deer and I think it's a critical component. But as a, a city council and mayor, I, I think it's the interest of your residents that is probably one of your greatest concerns.
Brett, I appreciate so much you're, you're taking the time to come join us this evening.
My pleasure.
If, if you could forward to my office some examples of communities such as ours that have passed effective deer management programs, I'd love to take a look at it and our law director and I can sit down and try to fashion something to take to judiciary committee where we can have some discussion, bring it back to council and we can have more discussion. But do something for the, for the long-term future of the deer population.
And just to have that in general.
Bob, in, in about three years ago, four years ago now, Bob did a really good bit of work, actually, on putting this together, but it's a Wilmington deer management proposal stated in September two thousand and nine, but I would pass these down to council and I have several others here that I'll, I'll set over on the side table for people to look at later. But these are examples of what Bob has done through his research to identify things that we, that have, that would have success and things that we should probably need to consider to have a good program. So Bob, I thank you for that. We'll, we'll continue looking at this and I thank the, you know, Jayman Ruth, Joe and Paul, I think, should also. Brett, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Just, just one or two other things before I finish my section. I, I, I do want to thank the city for allowing me to be gone for almost two weeks when I was in the Ukraine. There will be some follow-up and in fact, there will probably be at least one or two columns in the newspaper about the, the trip. I would point out that this was completely on my dollar. There was absolutely not a dime of city money spent on this, somebody's already asked. So there was not a dime of city money spent on the mayor going to Ukraine. Zero zip, none at all. Came out of my pocket and also Sister City Program in Cincinnati. But you'll be hearing more about that, it was a very interesting trip. And I do want to point out that we had a, Monday after I got back, we had the Small Business Resources Forum down in the community room. Really a good program and my, my hat off, my congratulations to Representative Cliff Rosenberger and his legislative aide, for Ben Webb, for putting that whole program together, it was really wonderfully done and a good help to several small businesses. And we're going to try to continue to follow up on some of their, some of the information they gave us. I also want to congratulate Marion Miller, Randy Nooburn, Joe Spicer for their successful election. And I want to thank Bill for, for being here still tonight. Thank you for, for making it an interesting process. That's, that's the way communities should operate. So my hat's off to everybody that's run and in January, we're gonna have, almost half of our council will be new. So, and Lauren, Lauren was, well, Lauren was re-elected, but Lauren was successful. So we appreciate how the process has. so we appreciate how the process has worked. And with that, I think, do we have any new jobs, Rob?
We do have some new jobs. The number today, I changed it just before the meeting, went from 550 to 563. The new jobs, 10 more from Cora Taylor, and three more from a new physician out at CMH and his staff. So that's an additional 13 from last time. And we're hoping that, we're soon going to have an announcement from Timber Tech on their numbers before the end of the year. But we have, we have quite a few that are, are waiting to try and total their numbers coming up on the holiday season, and we feel very confident that if we don't break it, we're going to be very, very close to that 750 number. I did get a, a report this evening, I get two reports a month, one from the city and then one from the county. This is a, this is a report on building permits from the county. And just for the month of October, 63 building permits.
Wow.
Back last year, when I was getting these same reports, I'd go three months and add them all together, and I didn't have 63 permits. So, you know, the things are finally moving, they're moving in the right direction, maybe not as fast as we'd like, but there's a lot more activity than we've seen in a very long time.
Appreciate that. And as we'll discuss in, in budget sessions that will be coming up, it, it's unfortunate, we've, we've got some good success on our job creation, but, you know, you get it on one hand, it's taken away on the other hand. The state, Governor Kasich swore that he would balance the budget, and he did. And as a result, we're not getting nearly the support from the state that we've had in the past. So we're getting more money from, from employment, but the, the local government fund is almost completely gone. We're not expecting to get anything from the cat tax this year. There, there are several other funding sources that we received from the government before, which basically almost nullifies some of the gains we've had, which said, which just means we've got to keep working, we've got to bring in more jobs. If the thousand's good, then 2,000's act a lot better, so we're going to continue to work on the job market. And I apologize for taking 55 minutes. But I'm going.
You were gone, so I guess.
Had time to make up.
We'll give you a break.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a, an ad hoc portion tonight. The, oh, I'm sorry. Well, we could do the other.
I, I just have one thing. Bob, if you would want to schedule a work session, we'll have out to you probably the first and next week, a packet with the proposed budgets from the various departments. But we finally got the last of the insurance information. We've gone back to Cora Williams, trying to fine tune that, so we now have the numbers we need to kind of plug into the budget. So if you want to schedule a work session sometime, we'll, we'll have the information out to everyone to review prior to that.
Thank you, Mr. Arthur, just trying to move things along here. And now, we do have an ad hoc committee report, and the chairman is not with us tonight. The president's out of town. But Mr. Yenik, I think in his absence, this is going to be a little portion.
Yeah, we have just one item on the agenda tonight, and that's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for natural gas aggregation. If you remember, back at the end of last year, beginning of this year, we went through an electric aggregation process in the city and then, you know, in the county, and that was very, very successful. And we're, say, in fact, Paul, you had numbers this morning, it was a little over $2 million?
Electric, yeah.
Yeah, that we put back in the community through electric aggregation.
That includes what the city's operations say, too.
Right, which was.
Same as spare money and individual money.
Right.
Well, I have a question on this. Under electric, there was two open public hearings, is that part of this process, too? Where's that going to fit into your schedule?
To be honest, I wasn't prepared to talk about this tonight. Scott was going to talk about it, so I don't know the answer to your question. We are only going to do one reading tonight.
So you understand the question?
Yes, I understand the question, but I don't know what the regulations are in regards to that, so I don't want to give a false answer as to what the requirements are. I would assume that they would be very similar to what they were before. But the margins that were not there in natural gas before seem to be there and available now, and so we felt it's worth looking at to see if we can find some savings for the residents of Wilmington in the natural gas aggregation. It'll work the same way as the electric, it'll be an opt-out program. So everybody that is eligible will automatically be enrolled unless they elect to opt out of the program. And there'll be a lot more, you know, information coming. We may find that when the bids come in, that there are very little savings, and if that's the case, then we won't enact. But it's worth taking a look, taking, seeing what kind of bids come in, and in order to get bids, we have to take this action, our resolution. So unless there's additional questions at that point, I'd like to ask for the first reading.
There should be a note that people should know that be cautious when signing up for individual contracts, because then you're entering into a cancellation phase, and you may not be able to take advantage of the savings, if any.
Correct. And the savings difference between the electric aggregation and the gas aggregation.
Much lower.
Is much lower. So, yeah, if you're in a contract where in electric aggregation, it may have been worth it for you to cancel your contract, pay the penalty to move into the electric, that may not be the case with the gas aggregation. But again, until we actually get proposals in and really see what might be available in the market, we really don't.
I believe we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just, iPads are handy. I'm looking at a group of Ohio Consumer Council, and pretend that it hires two public parks.
Sure did, I did.
Basically what you said, same process.
Thank you.
Plan adoption, certification, best rate notification.
It's the same as electric, basically.
Is there further discussion? All the papers in the public sector?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for natural gas aggregation services with Buckeye Energy Brokers.
Right now, we'll put at least one reading down the next one, but will you please check with Scott, who might know if he wants you to on there? Because I'm not positive if there's a timeline we're trying to meet.
That's what was discussed in committee, two minutes, they're reading the next, yeah.
Okay. But I'll double check. I appreciate it. It's all we have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Asset acquisition and use.
Asset acquisition and use does not have any ordinance at this time, but I do want to announce that we will be having an asset acquisition release committee meeting on Wednesday next week, 6 o'clock. And we include Mike and Brian, myself, anyone else who wishes to join us. That's all we have for asset acquisition.
What's the agenda? What's the agenda for that?
It will be the 13 property I believe you're discussing.
Thank you. So, for asset. Finance committee?
Finance committee, we have four separate headings on your agenda. If I can keep them straightened out, I'll get them in order here. Friend is trying to get me straightened out here. The, the first item, the three readings on an ordinance making supplemental appropriations, and these are from the general fund to professional services, indigent burial with some of 750 for the city's responsibility for burial for indigent persons. The second is permissive tax fund, the street improvements, 23,000, 779, and from the street M and R, the street maintenance, a sum of 30,000, 225. These are all on your little sheets in your agenda, and I think most of you have already discussed them. I'll move for the first reading.
Second. Motion, second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations and give this ordinance second and third readings in time of only.
Second. Have a motion, second, for suspension. Roll call, please.
Mr. Yenik?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Sebanaler?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Move for passage.
Second. Second, passage. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Sebanaler?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Yenik?
Yes.
The ordinance carries.
Second item, three readings on an ordinance making supplemental appropriations. This is an item from the general fund, a consultant services, building inspector, $2,200. I'll move for the first reading.
Second. Have a motion, second, for the first reading. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question. Will that get us through the end of the year, do you think?
Well, we hope so.
I know you've been very busy.
Yeah. And the reason we did it, that, that was a bill paid, and when they did the tabulation, it was, it was omitted when they did the final number. But as I talked about, you were in finance last night, you know, last year, we did about 34,000 building permit fees, and well, today I got one, another, we're, we're over $90,000 this year in, in permit fees. Of course, that means a lot more inspection, so with, so we'll be over 100,000 this year, probably.
Thank you.
Did Councilman Sebanaler, did you second that? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations and give this ordinance second and third readings in time of only.
Second. Have a motion, second, to suspend the rules and regulations. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Sebanaler?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Yenik?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion, second, for passage. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Sebanaler?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Yenik?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Sebanaler?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Yenik?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Sebanaler?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
An ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion, second, for passage. Roll call, please.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Sebanaler?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Yenik?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
An ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion, second, for passage. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sebanaler?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Yenik?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we have one more multiple item on the list. Again, you have it in your packet. There's five different entries. One entry, the first entry, from utilities to communications, $88,000. From radio maintenance to equipment maintenance, $542,000. From education and training fees to the equipment maintenance, $600.49. From equipment maintenance to communications, a sum of $10,000. From utilities to dumpster maintenance, a sum of $2,600. Again, you all have these listed in your packet, and prior to discussion, I move for the first reading.
Second. We have motion, second, for the first reading. Any further discussion?
Bob, can you explain the, can you explain item B?
I'll have to call on one of the experts. We have.
Which one is that on?
The $10,000.
Okay.
$10,000 for.
That goes with A.
Or D, I'm sorry.
D and A go together, they're going to communications to upgrade the new radios that the county is buying to go to a more rugged portable radio, costs $18,000, that's why they ate the team.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
An ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations and give this ordinance second and third readings in time of only.
Second. Motion, second, to suspend. Roll call, please.
Mr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Yenik?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Sebanaler?
Yes.
An ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion, second, for passage. Roll call, please.
Mr. Yenik?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Stucker?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Mead?
Yes.
Mr. Sebanaler?
Yes.
Mr. McKay?
Yes. An ordinance carries.
Other than a few comments later on, that's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Clark?
No report, Mr. President.
We have no report on the streets.
Mr. President, Pro Tem.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, Pro Tem, I'd like to make one comment about the streets in Timberland that were finished, they look great, I know everybody's very happy to have those streets finished after all these years and, good job.
Adding to that, I had multiple phone calls from Country Oaks, uh, also thrilled to have that completed.
Great, um, thank you very much. Solid waste recycling.
Mr. President, Pro Tem, I have nothing on the agenda, however, I would like to make a comment, while I was in the hospital, I asked a question about recycling and I found out that Clinton Memorial does not recycle and I'm thinking, this is a tremendous amount of recycled material that could be used for something good and I, I just, I thought maybe leadership Clinton or maybe some community group that's looking for some kind of a project might think about trying to implement a recycling program with maybe the hospital or some of the other, like, the, some of the hotels and things that are willing to do this, uh, there's an awful lot of stuff just going into, in the landfill and could be used elsewhere, so, I thought that was pretty, I was shocked, I, I didn't know that they didn't recycle ours.
A lot of their material is hazardous waste material, it has to be handled separately.
Right.
But I, I know when I was there twelve years ago, they had a bailer just off the loading dock where they bailed a lot of, of five, a lot of cargo.
Right.
And still there?
Okay, so, now that's. There's a tremendous amount of aluminum cans, glass and plastic and I was just like, hmm, you know, I just asked the question and I was like, I couldn't believe it, so, that might be something where someone in the community might be able to take on, maybe get something started there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Whistle, water, sewer? No report, Mr. President, Pro Tem. Judiciary? No report. Safety?
No report, Mr. President, Pro Tem.
Uh, no report under downtown reorganization, uh, parks and rec?
Had no report.
Income and levy tax?
No report.
Mr. Service Director?
No report, Mr. President, Pro Tem.
You don't even want to talk about that bridge that's being repaired?
He's trying to pretend it doesn't exist. I'm trying to pretend it doesn't exist, Larry can't.
They're working on it.
They're working on it.
Well, it's, it's getting there.
It's coming. And I'll, I'm like, uh, Don said, we, we got the street taping knocked out, a little weather turned on, so, that makes a lot of people happy.
Yeah, that's great.
It looks like they've done one side and they're, they're working on the second side and then they'll have to resurface, I guess, the, the whole.
I think they're gonna make it, I mean, you know.
So, thank you. Uh, Mr. Safety? No report, Mr. President. Thank you. Um, in your packet, uh, you have the, uh, income tax report and hotel lodging tax report, what is required?
I move they both be accepted.
Second. Have a motion, second, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Mr. President, Pro Tem, I, I'd like to request a change in the recording on the hotel lodging tax, um, and we had gotten it figures once, but we only get this quarterly, which is perfectly fine, but when we get it, it would be really nice if we got it with a comparison, you know, how are we compared to last year, because there's no way for us to remember and, and, and know, and, and all of the other reports that we get, you know, show a comparison, um, and it would be really helpful to know.
Is that something we could ask?
Does, does Mark, does that come from the tax office? It comes from your office?
Is that something we could follow up on? Um, this portion of the meeting is open to, uh, any member of council or, uh, the public to speak, if, uh, you wish to speak from the floor, please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I do have a comment, I would like to start a discussion about something that concerns me very much and I'm sure it concerns every person in this room, several days ago, we received a letter, it indicated that one of the contracts for the safety personnel had been completed and we had so many days to do something about it, approve it or disapprove it, and if we didn't do it, then it would automatically go into effect in thirty days, just as the previous one had, well, the previous contract, if you might remember, the, uh, gentleman came up and explained to us that they hadn't completed it yet, they were partway through it, they would come back to us when it was finished and then we would know where to go from there, well, now it appears as though we've approved one contract and they're saying if we don't take action on this one, it will be approved and we don't know yet how much it's going to cost or where the money's going to come from, and we're not rejecting our safety departments, we love our safety departments, it's just that I think we would be, not be doing the city a favor if we accepted contracts for which we don't know the cost and we don't know where it's going to come from and, uh, the letter was a legal-looking letter, it indicated to me that we're stuck with this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the law director and anyone else who would like to enter into the discussion to tell us what they know about it and where we stand.
Well, Councilman Mead, as you know, I didn't participate in the labor negotiations, we had another council, another attorney do that, um, my understanding from the law, once they've reached an agreement and that's presented to the council, if the council may reject the agreement by three fifths of a vote, um, but there's a deadline and I don't know what the date is of the, when the deadline is, but the council has a right to reject it by three fifths of a vote, as well as the union, their membership has a right to reject it by three fifths, fifths of a vote of that entire membership, to my knowledge, they haven't rejected it, if neither party rejects it by three fifths of a vote during that time period, then it goes into effect and the, it, and I can, if, this is all pursuant to the Higher Advice Code, I, I pulled it up in front of me, um, and it basically says that the agreement shall be executed between the parties if neither side rejects it, so, if they, if you don't act within that time period, then it shall be executed by the parties.
As the contract should have been worked out, will be executed.
Correct, between the city and the bargaining unit, yes.
So, the first one then is already executed?
That's my understanding, yes.
And the second one will be?
Correct.
What are my options at this point?
My understanding is that the council can reject that by three fifths of a vote or do nothing and then it goes into effect, but I don't know the date of when it would go into effect.
What are the methods that are acceptable in presentation?
What do you mean by that?
Like, like, what are the, how is the contract to be presented to council?
The contract and the recommendations are supposed to be presented to the council and then on the other side, the contracts or recommendations are presented to the union and you were supposed to have an opportunity to review that and then within that timeframe, if you didn't like it, then you as a council would reject it, or you do nothing and then it goes into effect after a certain period of time.
Do you know the date, Councilman Mead, when that goes?
No, I don't, I know that it's the second thirty days for the second contract, it's almost due and if we don't do something, that means we've accepted both contracts, we're going to have to not have money to pay.
The contracts really didn't change significantly, uh, there, there are, there are no, no new salaries, no salary changes, um, I don't, I don't recall all of the detail, um, but there, there were no increases, there will be a salary reopener starting in January, they will get just the salary, um, and then again in January of fifteen, but there were no increases in salary for any of the union employees at all, so it's basically the same, uh, contract as it was, there are a few nuts and bolts changes.
We changed the flashlight policy, we changed, uh, uh, compensatory time, that's how it's accumulated, and we changed out, uh, like, a current rate of pay so that everything.